Calling this public meeting to order at 7:00 PM. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually. This meeting is being recorded. Following the presentation by the applicant for which I will allow the town planner or the applicant to share the screen if they wish to make their own presentations. The board will ask questions of the applicant. Following this, I will ask for public comment. Consistent with the Select Board's temporary policy directive guidelines for public meeting and public hearings conducted via remote participation due to COVID-19 state of emergency, the public is invited to view the meeting as an attendee only and will not be permitted video access. If an attendee has a question during the public comment period for each application, they can use the question or an answer function where you will need to type in your name and address prior to your question so it can be read by me. Or you can also press star nine if you were on the phone to raise your hand. And also, we can also unmute you if you raise your hand. So basically, raise your hand one way or the other, and we will call on you. Questions will be answered to the extent possible. All video screens will be turned off with the exception of the board, town planner, and the current applicant. Once the board has acted on an application, the applicant will be returned to an attendee and is free to leave the meeting. This time, I will ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Kinderman's?
Here.
Mr. Fayah?
Yeah.
All right. All that being taken care of, let's get started. 7:00 PM, Noshadik Architects.
This is Chris Austin here. I'm the homeowner at 26 Elm Street.
Hi.
The evening. Thanks for having us. Tonight, we're going to be, we're requesting approval to remove an existing garage that has got some structural issues and is quite dilapidated and essentially replacing it with a new garage in the same footprint. And let me pass it over to Lisa Damiak at Noshadik Architects to provide the details.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa from Noshadik Architects. I, Heather, I don't know if we have the information that we had submitted. Can we put it up on the screen?
Elizabeth, are you putting, doing the screen, or do you want me to?
We can do it. That's fine.
Thank you.
Do you want to start with the existing site plan?
Sure.
All right. Give me two seconds.
No problem.
Oh, there we go.
There are some photographs that also show kind of the look of the current garage. It's a one-story garage. It's got a very shallow pitched roof. In terms of how it looks, how it looks in relation to the house, it looks like it's not. That's okay. It does not look like it, it fits very well with the house. Plus, it really is falling down. The roof has been kind of propped up over the last couple of years. So we have a couple of issues on the site. There we go.
Let me know if you need.
Yeah, so we can zoom in a little bit. So there's the Sudbury River kind of at the top of the screen there. And so we're dealing with wetlands and conservation. The main reason why we are here is because if we were to build a brand-new garage, it would need to be fully behind the house. And the issue is, if we try and make it fully behind the house, we're getting closer to the wetland setback, which they really don't want us to do. So what we're proposing is to essentially take the existing garage down and put a new garage in the same, essentially the same footprint. We're gonna, the overhangs are about five feet, a little bit more than five feet to the property line. What we're gonna do is keep the same dimensions of the roof, and we're going to make the garage slightly wider because right now it's only about 20.1 feet wide. And so we're gonna make it 21 feet wide, really not that much, kind of four and a half inches on either side, just to try and be able to have a little bit more space to pull some cars into the garage. In terms of the length, it's, I believe it is 40, 37.1 feet deep, the garage that currently exists. We're going to keep the front wall in the same location, and we're gonna make a 37-foot garage. So it's getting slightly further away from the river by point one inch or one foot.
You want me to bring up the informations?
Sure.
Okay. So just so I know, because I'm not that zoom savvy.
Yeah.
What's up now, and everybody can see, is the proposed plan, correct?
Yeah. So if you, if you zoom in a little bit to that.
All right.
Kind of close up to it, you'll see that the, kind of, there's a dotted gray line, almost like right within the proposed garage square or rectangle, and that's the existing footprint of the garage. So we're not, we're maintaining the setback. We're at the same place from the street. We're just really asking to take down the old garage and put up a new garage in its place. We, we've done the F A R calculations. We're under on that. The, there's elevations and plans. There's gonna be a second story, which will be a home gym. And so it'll just have heat and air conditioning, but there won't have any plumbing or anything on the second story of the building. And what this elevation is showing here is the shadow across the front is the existing, in a silhouette of the existing garage. And then the new garage, obviously, behind that. And it's, we've already been through H D C. They're really happy with this proposed look. It's more in keeping with the house. It's more proportional to the, to the house. And so they, they're all set with that. We have gone through N R C, and they signed off on everything and approved everything last week. And the Board of Health has received our application also for that. So I believe we've kind of checked all the boxes for coming to here before, before coming here.
Okay. So to clarify, the, there is no existing nonconformity because you're within the five feet that?
So, so the way that, I don't, I don't have the zoning bylaw rate in front of me to read it, is that the, if we were to put up a new garage and want to be five feet from the setback of the side yard, the front face of the garage has to be completely behind the furthest point back of the, the back of the house. So essentially, we have to push this garage probably 10, 15 feet further back.
I'm trying to see on that other, just, you're going, you are going closer now, though, than the five feet to the side.
No, no, we're actually, so the, we're, the walls of the garage are getting four and a half inches closer, but the roof is staying in the same location. We're gonna, because we're measuring to the roof for the five feet. So we're kind of making the garage a little bit wider under the, the existing roof plan, essentially.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks for, for clarifying that.
Yes, sure.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
So just to, let me say that in my own words. So it's noncon, it's effectively nonconforming now, and it will be nonconforming if we approve this, but it will not be any further nonconforming than is already the case, right? We won't, we won't increase the nonconformity.
Correct.
And, and you have, I mean, I suppose in theory, the only way you could avoid going back further into the wetlands would be to make a shorter garage. But it seems that that, you know, given, to me, it just seems like, given the length of time it's been here and all that, it seems pretty straightforward.
Are there questions?
No questions. I thought it was very, the graphics were very, very easy to read, very explanatory.
All right. Let me go ahead and open it up to public comment. Any public comment? We got nothing, Heather? All right.
No hands, no hands.
All right. Sounds good. Let's go ahead and close public comment. I agree. It seems very straightforward to me. I don't really have any, any much, much more to add. Any other, anyone have anything else to add, or?
Well, you know, I think there's the point about, we, we've got to kind of find this not more detrimental to the neighborhood, but I, I think this was well presented, and I, I agree with the point that it, it's actually gonna look more proportional and better next to the house than what's there now. So I think this is, you know, given that there's no butter saying they mind having a taller garage there, I think this is straightforward.
Right. And, and given that the historic commission has approved this and is, need to prove that it is not more detrimental, I think.
Yeah, well, those guys are always easy.
Yeah. Piece of cake.
Unlike us, right?
All right. Great. Yeah.
Elizabeth.
The approval, sorry. Elizabeth, were you trying to say something?
Um, I can, I can bring up the G I S system, but just to let you know, the closest of butter on that side of the garage, the, the dwelling's approximately 40 feet from the structure.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
And looking at the conditions of approval and the certificate of appropriateness, they're straightforward. They'll be part of our conditions if we approve this, right? And I'm confident that I agree with everyone. This is not, isn't more detrimental than the existing nonconformity. Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll do it since I can't participate in the next one. I'd move that, that the board grant a special permit to Noshadik Architects under Section 6.2.7, 7.1.3, and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to demolish the existing nonconforming detached garage and construct a new detached garage at the property in 26 Elm Street. In addition to the ordinary conditions, you know, the finding here is, is that it does not increase the nonconformity. It is well and better in keeping with the, the house and, and the property site, as evidenced in part by the approval enthusiastic approval, it seems, from the historic district commission. And I'll stop there.
I can't.
Great. Mr. Kinderman's?
Hi.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Lisa Kersmore? Hi. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
All right. You too.
Bye now.
Bye.
Bye.
Jim, are you not participating because you didn't hear, because he wasn't here? Is he still there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But you can. I wasn't, I wasn't there, and I also didn't see, go to the site visit. So I think with, where you have three people, I think that's more appropriate.
But you can, you can participate. You just can't vote, right?
I'll participate. I can vote. Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just meant I couldn't make the motion. So I wouldn't make that one.
All right. Great. All right, Len, let's go ahead. 7:05, Commons in Newbury. I'm not sure if there's a, much more to present. We all went on a site visit. We have some landscape plans. Who is here for the applicant?
I think it's Mac user. Mac user is the applicant.
Mac user. There, Mac user.
Can you not hear me? Can you hear me now? Sorry. Can you see me also, or no?
Nope.
What do I do? Do I hit start video?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Sorry, guys. Yeah, so I did submit an old drawing that was a, an old drawing from Stamsky and McNary. And I had my present surveyor lay out the house on the existing contours. So I thought that would be helpful for some of the elevation questions. I also met with the friends of the cemetery. And I met with Andrea Solomon, and we, you know, walked around and looked at the landscaping plan in some detail. And she has written me a letter of support only as a citizen. I believe that Heather probably has that in her, in her emails at this point. And we've, you know, we heard that there were some letters that had come in that didn't like the fence. And so we hastily tried to pull together some 11th-hour supporters, who I believe have also sent Heather some letters of support. So with that being said, you know, I'm not, you're right. I don't think there's a whole lot more that I can add.
Heather, did everyone receive those, or I know that I got that email recently?
I just had enough time to, I got four or five of the emails, I think, up on the website, and I sent them to you. That's it.
So the other board members haven't seen those?
No.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah. I apologize about the 11th hour. I sort of didn't want to have to bother my butters or, you know, anybody else, you know, to go out of their way on our behalf. But when I saw the other letters, I just thought that I better mount some kind of a defense, or else I'm gonna be out of business, which I hope is not gonna be the case.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Well, I think, let's just get right into it. I don't know if we wanted to start with the board having any, any questions. Why don't I start with that? Does anyone have anything they want to open with?
I actually had one thought occur to me, which is, I'm not sure why this hill is called Windmill Hill, but is there any sort of historical record we have that would show whether there was ever a windmill on top of this hill?
There, there was. Yeah. I don't know much about it, but I know that it was up there and that it was a gristmill, which was pretty much doomed to failure. I think that it might have worked for a week or something like that. And then there was quite a gale that came up, and it broke the windmill, and they gave up on the effort. But, don't quote me.
And was that, do you think, was that like before the 1850s, or do you have any sense of when that was up?
Oh, you know, I think it was sort of 1800s. And certainly, the windmill wouldn't work now because back in the 1800s, there were no trees, you know? And I'm sure that there were sheep that were grazing and keeping, keeping the forest down to a minimum. So right now, the trees would loom over the windmill.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think that was my, that was one question. The other, I guess, is, you know, there were some questions from the public letters about, you know, I V on the fence or chemical treatments, or, you know, planting some trees on the cemetery side of the fence. I didn't know if you had any thoughts on.
Yeah. I mean, I am, I am all in favor of being able to march forward with our project. And if that means that I have to, you know, plant some trees on the cemetery side, I'm all on board with that. And honestly, I'm more than on board with it because I think there's a giant element of truth to the idea of trying to, you know, mitigate the abruptness of the, of the fence, of the, of the entire property line. I think it makes a lot of sense. The cemetery committee was open to it, and, you know, obviously, I'm in favor, and I'm willing to, you know, fund it. And I'll write a letter if that's what I need to do.
So the, I just want to, the Board of Appeals does not have the ability to require an applicant to plant trees on other town land controlled by a different board, or, you know, whether it's, it, it may not even be the cemetery committee. It may be, it may be the Public Works Director, but, so I just want to, to caution you on that.
Understood. We had to submit a letter. We had to submit a letter to take down the dead trees that were along the property line, and it had to be approved, I think, by your body in order for the cemetery to be able to accept it. So we certainly understand that. And, you know, we, we are all in favor of, you know, trying to be good neighbors and trying to make that happen.
Okay. Thanks.
So my, my, my point, my, my comments are to the board. So there, there may be other elements with the cemetery, the management of the cemetery. So I just want, to Roddy's question, I just want to make that just aware.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I take that point. And I, I think I was asking more to, you know, just confirm that it does seem that the property owner is open to kind of working with the cemetery committee. And, you know, that, that's more the spirit that I'm looking for than some act, you know, I don't think we can put any actual conditions around what you're gonna do on that side of defense. But that, that's helpful clarity, too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Other comments from the board?
So Elizabeth, I have a question. So Elizabeth, just in a, it's maybe more of a total process question, but I know that there's, there obviously other people within the town that you routinely make inquiry of from the, the Public Works to the N R C, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a process or anything for dealing with this, with the, with the cemetery or the cemetery committee, or any sort of, what, what's, what is, what's concerning here to me as a matter of process, really more than, I think, an issue for this, perhaps this particular situation, is that hypothetically, if, if the board approves this permit, and then the landowner would decide for whatever reason not to make any improvements to the cemetery side, you've sort of lost that ability to sort of complete the agreement, if you will, that, you know, which is the landowner's obviously clearly interested in doing that and, and wants to fund it. But I'm just thinking about, from the town's perspective, about how we would go about enforcing that.
So that was, that was the reason for my caution. There's, there's a lot of elements that, other elements that go into the, the care and the maintenance of Sleepy Hollow Cemetery. And while, you know, the, you know, the property owner is very interested in, in working and, and, you know, doing things off the property on the cemetery side, that's, that's my caution. It's, it's not, you know, it, it's not his ability or even this board's ability, and it, it may just be Public Works, and it may be planting certain types of trees that it may be an issue with the, the graves that are in that area. Or, so there's, there's other, there's other elements beyond just what, you know, this board is looking at this particular project. There's, there's a lot of other items. So as far as, you know, if the board was to move forward and approve this project, but had, you know, wanted to require a certain type of landscaping on the town side, on the cemetery side, I, I would definitely recommend that the board get that input from Public Works prior to, you know, making that a condition, because it may be a condition that can't be, the applicant can't fulfill.
And just to follow up, I appreciate that. So just to follow up, because I, I get that. And I get the idea that, you know, once the trees and everything are planted, they are, since they're on Public Works land, are the problem of, or, excuse me, cemetery land, are the problem of the town, and the town has to maintain them, and the town has to care about them and all that. So one possibility is you, is the board would hold this up, kind of waiting for some sort of an actual agreement, if you will, or, or input from whoever's in charge of this. Something else that's pretty, is, is not as solid, of course, but maybe appropriate here would be to, you know, have a, you know, condition that the applicant, you know, work with, contact and work with the cemetery committee to, or whoever. I mean, again, we have to figure out who that is to, you know, to try to come up with a mutually agreed-upon plan for softening that side of the landscape. And if, for some reason, the, the committee just says no, or asks for you to plant redwood trees or something like that there, you know, well, you wouldn't necessarily, you know, the deal would just fall apart, and that would be that. I'm just trying to be responsive, I think, to the fact that everybody, including the applicant here, would like to have this done right. But I do recognize that, you know, we, we sort of, sitting here tonight, we can't cause that to happen, to use that term.
Jim, I, I think we've sort of had conditions or indications like that before. I'm thinking of in West Concord, the big new building on, on Main Street, where we, you know, had some language about thinking about, you know, public art spaces, or, you know, I can't quite put my finger on it, but I, I feel like we've, we've done something like that.
Although I'd argue that maybe that was less integral to the project. The other, the other thing we have done, for example, is Barrett's Mill. I think we also had some kind of good faith language in there that didn't get followed. So I, I guess I would caution that if we want something to have teeth, we kind of try to make it have some teeth without making it be impossible, like putting redwoods on there. But this is only one part of this conversation, obviously. We're talking about the fence, we're talking about the height and the massing of the building. So let me, does anyone have any other comment? Theo, did you have any other comments about this issuer?
No, not, not about the process, let's say here, no.
Okay. So, right. So, I mean, these are the two points, and I think we're right into it here in a place where I don't love being, where we're balancing these private property rights versus a really sensitive area. And the more I think about it, the more sensitive I think it is. And so I think that you see that, it was very helpful putting, putting the polls up, and I think that you see that it does bloom over the cemetery, however you want to say it. It, it is over the cemetery. Whether that is a deal killer, that's something for us to discuss. I think it bears discussion. I think there's a lot of interested stakeholders here, and if we can come up with a solution that makes everyone happy, that's what I would like to try to do. So Jim, go ahead, make that happen. Just make everyone happy. Do we want to discuss the massing?
Yeah, that's, that, that, I'm totally, what you just said, Elizabeth, I totally, totally resonates with me because it's like, the more I look at it, the, the more difficult it becomes, it's becoming. And, and I think the site visit was good, and especially setting up the scaffolding with the height of the, the building was very, very telling. And it's, it's a very tall building, and it's set, it's, it's finished floor elevation is set very high, and it, it makes it looming, makes it look looming over, over the cemetery. Now, the applicant has done, I think, a lot to mitigate the fence, which is now sort of almost biting him because it's, it's so, the fence is pretty in your face, and it'll, it'll mellow over time, and I think it'll blend in very nicely. But, you know, it'll be a few, a few years down the road before that happens. nicely. But, you know, it'll be a few, a few years down the road before that happens. I think the planting of the evergreens, and just in general, the planting plan is very robust with tall evergreens that will do a lot, I think. Taking, taking the second story of the existing building and off, I think, will also diminish sort of the impact of that parcel on the lot, because I don't think you will see the existing house anymore, once it's, once it's second story's taken off. And it was also having the materials of the, of the new building be a natural shingle with a, with a dark green trim will also be, will also be pretty soft, and, you know, instead of, you know, something that's painted, and it's, it's, it's bright. So I, I think all of these, all of the things that the applicant is doing, I think, is, is helping the blending in, or diminishing its impact. But as you just said, you know, how much is, is that, you know, it's, it's, how do we weigh that? And that's, that's, that's what I've been struggling with. So.
I agree, and, and knowing that paint color can change in the future, you know, we're not...
Right, right.
That kind of thing. So, yeah, well said. Robbie or Jim, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, that was well said. You know, the, the, the height was more impressive with this, once I was able to see the story posed than I had imagined it would be. And I, but I, you know, I also think I've made this comment before, you know, it's, I don't know how many degrees of arc, but it's a lot more than 180 when you look around from that, any point in the cemetery, you're seeing a lot of built up structures. And so, you know, let's say you've got this with, without any structures in your view, you know, you're kind of moving one edge of that inwards now by adding the new h- house on top of the hill. And yes, I recognize it is the sort of high point versus other points around it aren't sort of over it like that. But it's, you know, I, I, I think, yes, it's, it's nice to have, and desirable to have the sort of setting of it, of the cemetery be kind of preserved with that vista around it. But it, you know, for most of the area surrounding the cemetery, that, that sort of more bucolic feel just doesn't exist. And I, you know, I, I struggle with, we're going to tell the guy on the edge of the, you know, with the last house that he can't do it, but all the houses before that are somehow, you know, less intrusive, and okay, that I can look in that direction and see a house, but I don't want to look in this direction and see a house.
I don't know, Robbie. I don't, I mean, I, I see what you're saying. On the other hand, it's, it, it is specific in its location at the very top of that hill, right overlooking everything. And, you know, the other houses aren't before us right now. But I, I would say that there is a very specific, that location is a very specific location that takes, that we should think about. Listen, in my ideal world, I'd like to see less massing there. I, I, again, I am struggling with how to, how to make these two things come together. I don't know, but I, I guess, I, I don't know, Robbie. I guess I don't totally buy that point. That is the lot that it is. That's the lot that, that it is where it is, and these are the issues that it has.
Right, and, you know, but this is like-
Special permit. You know, these are not, not by rights.
I, I think we're talking about neighborhood character and detriment to the neighborhood, which, you know, the neighborhood there is the cemetery. And so, you know, those are always very kind of, you know, there's not a bright line of what, what that means. But, you, you know, it's-
It's also not just a cemetery, you know, I mean, it's-
Right, right.
National importance. And, and Tom, I'm saying this, unfortunately for you, I'm not saying, like, trying to make your life hard, but that's what it is. It's a, you know, register, so.
I, I, you know, and I think it is hard. And I, I think this is a good kind of setting out, you know, here's the two ways you can look at it, because there are different ways to look at it, you know. And, and to Theo's, to Theo's comments, I, you know, I agree, this isn't, this isn't a grist mill that used to be up there. This is a well thought through project where there have been efforts, and there is, there are elements of the plan that, you know, given, you know, maybe the house could be smaller, but, you know, given the house is there, it, it's sort of, you know, how can we put up some sort of landscaping and, you know, design it so that it's, it, it's not a stark structure that sticks out, but is, you know, has, has other parts to it that, that sort of address the, the real concern here.
Yeah, the, one, one, I think one of the unfortunate parts here is, is that the, the finished floor elevation, the elevation that the house is set at is, is really at the highest, almost, at, that it can be.
Elizabeth, do you have anything we can pull up to look at that? Sorry, Theo, just as you're talking, can we-
Yeah, and then, and, you know, so, and, you know, I think, you know, since the pool is already at that same elevation, I think we're almost, I think from the applicant's point, we're, we're, we're sad at that. But if the whole, the house would have been just set a couple, three feet at least, you know, lower on a finished floor, would have been, it's, it would, that's, that's, that's it. If you can, if you can zoom in on just the proposed house, you see the, the finished floor of the house is set at, at 103, which is that, where that little playhouse is, is, it's the contour around the playhouse. That's also 103, the, to the cemetery.
103.5.
Yeah, two, so, to the cemetery, it, it drops off. And right in the corner, it's, it's 99, I have it up on the screen here as well. It's 99. So it's just, it's, on that, on that end, it's already four feet above, above the, above the existing grade. So, and I think that's also where it just, the cemetery, the grading cemetery drops off, and that's where it's, where it's looming over the cemetery. And, and I don't want to use a negative term like looming, and it's just, can't come up with something else at the moment. So, how, you know, in a perfect world, this, the finished floor of this house would have set at, at like, I mean, I would have set it at the, at 99 or, or 98, just a little bit lower. Given, given the grading that, that was there, I think that would have been, would have been a wiser choice, and that would have helped, obviously, with, with the massing would have been four feet lower over, you know, and that would have helped.
Elizabeth, we have photos, did you take photos of the polls?
I don't have them. I think, I'm working on it right now. They're really, the files are pretty big, so I'm trying to get them up real quick, but it's taken a little bit, so.
Okay.
I do have the other sets of plans. So this would be the landscape plan. And then just the floor plans and elevations of the house.
Um, maybe we should do this. Any other comments from the board? Why don't we, if not, I can open up to public comment, and then we can sort of-
That'd be great.
All right, let's, let's do that. I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment. If you could just raise your hand by pressing the button, or? See anyone?
Hello?
Yo.
Hello?
Looks like David.
This is Nancy Frisella Lee. I'm trying to unclick my video.
Okay. Okay, Nancy Frisella, let's start with Nancy Frisella. I, I can speak, and, and do you have my slides ready to share, Elizabeth?
Um, no.
Did you get them up? Is that okay? Or do you want me to show them?
Um, I did not receive an email from you with your slides.
Oh, I thought-
Can we share?
Okay. Oh, I thought you did get them. I sent them to you.
Hang, hang on.
I think I saw them when you opened up your email, actually, earlier.
Um, no.
By my husband, Peter Lee, sorry.
Oh, okay.
That would have had his name, they would have had his name on it. Anyway, I can start talking to you, just speed things up. I have some slides that I took this morning. And what I want to talk about is the totality of all the elements in the development plans for 18 Windmill Hill Road. By the way, my name is Nancy Frisella Lee. I live at 140 Walden Street, and I was at one time on the Historic Districts Commission, and I'm an art historian, and obviously very interested in Concord and its history and protecting its history. So as I, and, and I also want to emphasize that I don't know the owners at all. So anything that I say is not personally directed at them. It's just, once I've, I've stuck, you know, concentrated on this project, I have some very serious concerns about it. And as I said, I want to talk about the, all the totality of all the elements of the project. And I'm, as I read the, the 7.1.5, oh, here's my first slide. Oh, that's the last one. If you can go to the first one, I numbered them one, two, the first, yeah, great, perfect. And, you know, in your, in the bylaws, it talks about the neighborhood. Well, the neighborhood in this case is Sleepy Hollow Cemetery, because Windmill Hill Drive is on a cul-de-sac, and those houses are quite private, especially 18 Hill, 18 Windmill Hill Road. It, it's up a very steep drive and in, in the corner. And if you look at this slide, this is an overview of what's called the new burying ground of Sleepy Hollow. And I've learned a lot, focusing on this project. This is the oldest part of the cemetery. It was purchased by the town in 1823, when space ran out on the two oldest town burying grounds, the old hill burying ground and the south burying place. And so it contains the oldest graves in, in Sleepy Hollow, in all of Sleepy Hollow. And interestingly, I, I read that Henry David Thoreau was originally buried here, and then later his, his remains were removed, which I found fascinating. I don't know why they were. This face also, this photo also shows the very long, tall wooden fence that the owners have newly erected. And as you can see, this is a distinct section of this, the burial ground. And it's, by the way, I, I think I just said this, it's called the new burying ground section, because it was that new, new burying place in 1823. And so that fence extends all the way across the ridge. So it is a, a very new element of a cemetery that has existed for almost 200 years, and two years it will celebrate its 200th birthday. And it is apparently now a permanent feature of this historic landscape. And also, I just want to point out, in case you don't know, in case some of you don't know, the cemetery, of course, which is very famous, we all know that, it's on the National Register of Historic Places. So, could I have the next slide, please? This is just one example. It's a replacement of an old marker, and it shows the gravestone of Ephraim Farrar and his wife, Lavina. Lavina Wright was, Lavina Wright was 13 years old and living in the Wright Tavern with her parents when British soldiers came to Concord on October, on April 19, 1775. And she died in 1839. That's just one example of, of an old marker in that section. Next slide, please, or next photo. And this is just a close up of the first one. That, that stone wall that you see, which is on the left side, as you're standing, looking at the hill, that is really an interesting feature. It's a field stone wall topped with granite block capstones. And it was apparently in 1870 repaired with stones that are from the 1789 Concord Jail, where famously Henry David Thoreau was famously imprisoned. And apparently, I haven't been able to see it, because it's dangerous to go up there right now, but there are lines and notches for our iron bars that can still be seen in that historic wall. And so behind this, and, and also in this photograph, you can see the, the trees, the mature trees that are, that are still there, and they screen the existing house. Between the frontmost tree, as you can see a glimpse of the bricks of the fireplace, the chimney of the existing house. And you can see how well it's, it screens, the tree is screening the existing house. And I also want to point out that the existing house, which I think was built, if I'm correct, in 1939, whoever built it, I think, may have been very sensitive about this site, positioning it on the lowest graded part of the site, and keeping it to the left of the leftmost part of the cemetery. So the next slot, set photo, please.
Yeah, Nancy, just kind of being cognizant of her time, yeah.
Well, I think this is really important, I'm sorry.
It absolutely is important.
And I think that people-
I have no concept of how many slides you have, that's my-
This is, oh, I only have five.
I just had no idea.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Elizabeth. Okay. So this shot, slide from the other side, the right side, you can see that, that's the structure that you're asking about, that I guess was put up to show the committee. And it shows the long extent of the fence. And it shows the house on the original existing house, sort of lower down, and how high the grade is, which will be in the next, the last slide. But on the plans, it's not just a great huge house, a massive a house that's going to be there. There's going to be a road parallel right to the driveway, parallel right to that fence, the whole length of the fence, that it's going to, the existing driveway starts from Windmill Hill Road, goes up to the existing house. Now it will continue behind the existing structure, go around it, go all the way down the length of this fence, and go to the new garage. It will be a second garage, there'll be two garages on the property. And then between the existing, what is the existing house and what would be the new house, there's also, and you could bring up the plans, it's on the plans that are submitted, a parking area. I don't know what that's for, but this new development is going to accommodate a lot of cars. And that parking area, if it's still intended to be there, I don't know what that serves, because it's not near any garage. And then right behind that fence, between the new fence and the driveway, will be extensive new plantings, contemporary landscape design, not, nothing to do with the original historic landscape. And so the fence will have, a fence, the fence is of course, an impermanent structure, because it will have to be replaced from time to time. But it will always have to be there, because it's always going to have to screen the driveway, the lower story of the house, the plantings. So it's always going to have to, to be there. And of course, not only is it, there going to be a large new house, there's also going to be the lights and the sounds of the cars that go with it. And the last slide, please. Sleepy Hollow 5. Sorry, it was, you know, it's the last one. The first one that you showed. Well, anyway, that, I'll, I'll just talk about it, and then it'll come up. That, there it is, I can see it. This photo was taken looking over the wooden fence and onto the portion of the property where the new house and garage will be located. It's a good slide that can show everyone watching, that shows just how much higher the grade is here than it is where the existing house was built. And the highest point of this piece of land sits much higher than even the base of that fence. And it also shows that the owners, unfortunately, I put fairy lights there, which again, I, I'm sorry, but this is a distinctive site, and if it were in a private neighborhood, that would be completely appropriate. In this part, I think it's just completely inappropriate. And I just want to finish by saying, if this property and plan were being looked at by the Historic Districts Commission, they would be making considerations of what is visible from the public way. And this historic cemetery is not considered a historic district, but it is obviously a historic cemetery that deserves as much protection as every relevant town committee can give it, and all Concord citizens who are interested in, in historic things. And I just want to comment about some of the things that the, the board was saying, especially about the other houses around this. This really is the only house that directly abuts onto the cemetery, that is going to have so much of a detrimental impact. There's no- There's no other house that I, that I can see that really, there's one other house that you can see, but it's much lower down and screened by a lot of trees. There are tree, there are houses across from Bedford Street. But that's another section of the town and all along, this was supposed to be a town cemetery within close to a town center, but still distinctly separate from it. And so we really, really need to give this project very close consideration. If it was in another neighborhood, it might be appropriate. Here it is not. The owners could show, choose if they wanted to, to build, if they needed a new house, they could rebuild on the existing footprint, not higher up where it is.
Thank you, Nancy.
Listening.
Thank you very much. Other public comment?
Hello, I'm not sure how to do the video uh, on this, but. Yes, my name is, sure.
Yeah, go ahead, just introduce yourself.
In twenty-seven Windmill Hill Road, I'm uh, the Everts' next door neighbor. And I'm just want to let you know that I don't have any issues with them building the house as their next door neighbor. And that um, they actually, as far as landscaping commitments go, they have been, they have followed through with all commitments they've made to us regarding landscaping in the past. So again, I just want to put that on record that we have no issues at all with the building of the house next door.
Great, thank you. Other comments? Nancy, is that Nancy Nelson?
Yes, it is. I'm trying to figure out. There it is. There's a thumbs up. Um, my name's Nancy Nelson. I live at sixteen ninety-five Lowell Road. Um, in the spirit of true disclosure, full disclosure, I'm a member of the Historical Commission. Um, but speaking for myself only um, tonight. And I apologize, I wrote a letter that I had wanted to be distributed to the board. Um, but I didn't follow protocol, obviously, and I didn't see it posted, but um, I agree with many of the comments that um, that have been made so far. And I just think it's extremely unfortunate that um, a more fulsome discussion would not have happened between um, historically oriented people and the owners because I think with uh, sensitive design and uh, mutual uh, cooperation and collaboration, a, a more compassionate design might have emerged for this property that would have met the needs of the owners and also respected this historic site. Um, I have a process question. Um, my background also is in urban and regional planning, among other things. And as I read uh, the zoning bylaw, trying to figure out why you would grant a special permit. The, the um, the section on special cert uh, permit says that uh, the ZBA in order to grant a special permit would have to determine that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the public interest, the town and the neighborhood. I've had trouble trying to figure out what the beneficial as uh, impacts might be. But the adverse, adverse impacts to the cemetery's historic setting and to the many people who visit there every year can be described. And this would be a modern imposing structure, I'm sorry for the, for the word. But um, it will be um, extremely prominent, that may be a better word. Um, much higher than the existing residents over these uh, ancient grave sites. Um, the additional dwelling unit also will increase the activity and the vehicles on site. The long driveway, which is now very, very close to the boundary and much more into this, the building setback, right up against the boundary practically. Uh, will bring that uh, kind of activity and noise closer. The fence is quite tall um, and monolithic really. It's highly utilitarian and it suits its function. But it is, um, it's going to be a dominant feature in the neighborhood, which is the cemetery. And it will, it will fade, that's true, but it will be a dark gray wall instead of the light colored wall that it is now. So um, I think there are some things that working with a landscape architect, um, also in my background. The fence could be modulated somewhat. Uh, maybe some changes to the building could be made. I don't know if reducing the ridge height would help. I'm, I really haven't, I haven't uh, looked at that all that much, but um, I'm hoping that uh, if, it might still be possible to work out some uh, changes which would mitigate the overall dominance of the new structure and of the fence itself. But I'm, I'm wondering how would the ZBA look at the beneficial impacts of this project and balance it with the detrimental adverse effects, because I don't understand the beneficial impacts.
Okay, um, thank you, Nancy. Um, we will be getting into that. For sure, because it's part of our findings. So um, not to push you off on that one, but um, any other comments?
I just have a question, actually, which is the fence, I, I mean, I recognize the fence, but the fence itself is not really if the landlord, if the landlord, if the, if the owner put up this fence period and didn't do anything else. I don't think anyone's saying that the fence, which is now up there, is in violation of any zoning code. I mean, I understand that aesthetic comments of people are making, I'm just trying to understand from a zoning point of view.
I, I think just to add to that, Jim, you know, what can the owner do by right? Where, he's asking for a permit because he wants to keep the pool house, which goes over the additional fifty percent. But if he just to, to took out the old house and built the new house and didn't keep the pool house, are we even here, right?
Yeah, he, before we get into this more, can, there's still actually public comment.
Okay, well, that's what I, anyway, that's what I was just asking that question about that.
Okay, um, Robbie, I, I appreciate that point. I do want to go back to it. But um, Andrea Solomon, are you?
Hi, yes. I'm sorry, I'm in my car, so I'm, don't have my video on.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I'm actually a member, member of the cemetery committee, but I'm just here as a private citizen. Oh, sure, it's seventy-five Ash Street. In Concord. So um, we did discuss these plans in the, in our meeting, which was on February third. And uh, from the perspective of the cemetery, we concluded that we did not think that the new structure was going to have a major impact on the cemetery. So we declined to, um, we declined to say anything publicly about it because we felt that uh, you know, it wasn't pertinent to what you guys were discussing, which was I think the floor area ratio is really what they're coming to you for. That was the special permit, right?
Good gross.
Anyways. So he, um, we uh, we did look at the fence. We totally understand why a property owner in that space would want a fence because there is a lot of uh, people that come through the cemetery and we completely understand why privacy may be an issue for people who live there. Um, I'm kind of surprised at the number of people who think that they deserve a view into someone else's backyard. Um, that was uh, something that came up in our discussion. Um, so again, we do understand why a person would want a fence who lived in that area. Also, we thought we'd looked at the structures that they were building, though the current house is going to be smaller, shorter than the house, you know, than it is now, so there would be less of that structure visible. The new structure is higher, but with the growth of new landscaping, that would largely shield that house from view from the cemetery. Um, we also consider that when you're standing in the cemetery, you do have a view, not just of that area, but of the houses across the street and traffic on Bedford Road. And there's only so much control you can have of the surrounding areas. That cemetery was put kind of in the middle of town because it was meant to be a part of the town, which means being good neighbors to the people who live around it. And we didn't think it was within our purview necessarily to tell people on private property what to build. I would, I think one of your members just mentioned that if they weren't applying for a variance, you would, they could, they could build just about any, or a number of different structures, which we may not like at all, but may still be following all the rules and they wouldn't have to come in front of you. And in fact, there's a house not too far from me that is, is following all the rules and it's one of the ugliest structures I've ever seen and there's nothing we can do about it. So I, I would just say that the Everts in this case seem to be very thoughtful people. They are very willing to listen to suggestion and they seem very interested in being good neighbors to the cemetery and that was something that was very uh, reassuring because I don't know if every builder, every, any person who would necessarily purchase that property and build on it would, would have the same uh, thoughtfulness that they did. So that's all I wanted to add.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Um, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. I, I agree. I mean, Tom, you guys are being very willing to be accommodating and listening to everyone's concerns. And I also agree that you have a right to build something there, but and we wouldn't be here if it was by right. That's the whole, probably back to your point.
I understand.
But, but we're here. And so the point, question is, do we have an ability now to have an input to improve the plan or do we say we don't care? It's fine the way it is. I don't have personally any interest in micromanaging the house down to every little detail, but I do still believe that it is a, a sensitive area, so. And I also believe, Tom, you've shown your willingness to be, you know, accommodating. So I guess I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to be more accommodating and we all could be happy without taking away your right to, to build a house.
Well, I mean, I'll certainly work on lowering, you know, the ridge. I can talk to the architect and you know, we can see what we can do to uh, to try and modify that. And you know, as far as uh, developing a plan for uh, helping with the landscaping on the cemetery side. Um, now I'm more than happy to uh, put a nice fat round number on a gift to the cemetery. And the town can use the money wherever they want within the cemetery. If they think that there's a greater need in a different location for the money that I would advance them, then that's completely fine with me. If they want to, you know, consider putting in some, you know, nice trees between, you know, the, you know, the, the, uh, the worst view of the house, if you will, the, the part of the cemetery where you can you know, feel the house the most. If you guys want to put some, you know, trees in there, I'm, I'm happy to do that, too. I just, I just, you know, I mean, I understand that it's, that it's sensitive. We've, you know, my neighbor, my neighbor, uh, Dave just was on the phone saying that, you know, he's approved of all the landscaping. When we bought the house, you could see our really bad house from Monument Street. Now you can't see it at all because of all of the hardscaping and landscaping that we've done. So, I mean, is it you know, worse to have an ugly house on the uh, parade route from the Old North Bridge down to the center of town? Or is it, you know, worse to have a, a house that you know, is new but natural colors and trying to blend in as much as possible that you can't really see from Bedford Road unless you slow down to five miles an hour and really focus in on it. And you know, granted, there are people who wander through the cemetery and honestly, one of the reasons we put up the fence is because we constantly have people going up there and having lunch in our backyard and, you know. I mean, it's like, I, I, I mean, I understand everybody's perspective and we do want to be sensitive. We don't think we're building a McMansion by any means. You know, I think it's a small, tight house that, you know, we would like to live in and we want to maintain the best part of the existing house because it has all the utilities from the street coming into it. It's got, you know, uh, you know, the possibility of having an ADU. It's got useful space to us because we're grandparents and, you know, we, we expect to have more grandchildren and we like to have a satellite house to be able to send the kids off to, so.
So if I can summarize a little bit, though, what I'm hearing is we're really close to getting to the point where I'd like to get that maybe we all can be really happy with something. Robbie, Jim, Theo, what do you think about any of those compromises? Uh, what we just talked about, lowering the ridge line a little, trying to come up with something with a cemetery committee or public works. I know that it brings in another committee, but is there a way for everyone to just get to a package that we're all feel like we've put our best effort forward to protect everyone's interests?
I, I certainly could get there, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think those, I mean, it's, it's I, I think those are very important, lowering of the, of the peak, that's sort of the shop and over the cemetery, I think could could help tremendously. And then need any softening on the other side of the fence, I think would go a very long way in uh, in, in just blending, blending it more together. And I, and I, I, I get keep on coming back to the fence. It's like, you know, of course, the applicant did the fence sort of out of a gesture of good, goodwill as like, you know, start, start screening now. You know, just be ahead of it all. And it's sort of like, it's, it's, it's coming back now to bite him a bit and that's, that's unfortunate, but I yeah, I, I do think that fence will, will just completely blend in over, over a few years, but having something soft, even if it's just simple white pines in front of that would go a long, long way.
Tom, sorry, go ahead.
Can I make one more point? I'm sorry to keep busting in like this, but just to address the whole driveway issue. This is something that I went over with the cemetery committee. Those of you who have been up to the property know what I'm talking about. We actually cut and lowered the grade for the driveway for the specific reason of making it so that we have an earth berm between the driveway and the cemetery, which really, really cuts down on any noise or any feel from the cemetery side because you, you know, even if the house wasn't there, you certainly wouldn't be able to see the door handle of a car that was driving by. With the fence, absolutely, you cannot see it. With the landscaping, that's due to come in right, you know, uh, you know, as soon as we possibly can this spring. You also will permanently not be able to see any car that's driving by or really hear it, for that matter. Sorry.
Yeah, so, um, Jim and Robbie, I'm curious if you think that this is um, how we can kind of get to a, a solution here? And if it's maybe one more meeting of a package and.
Well, maybe I'll just make a couple of comments. The first is, is that uh, and I can't remember, uh, one of the, one of the comments from the public talked about this, but um, it's, it's, it's very hard to imagine that a fence on this property um, is not a benefit both to the public, quite frankly, and to the homeowner. Just to take the fence for a second. Because I get the fact that you really don't want people who are in Sleepy Hollow Cemetery. You don't want them just as a general rule, the town doesn't want them to, you know, easily meander over into private property that's surrounding the cemetery and sort of expand, in, in, in an essence, expand the cemetery to uh, greater footprint than it already has. You do want activities which are happening on the private uh, landowner's side of the fence that may or may not be you know, in keeping with the notion of a, of a, of a cemetery, you know, just kids playing and doing other things that, you know, activities and so forth, you uh, cars, et cetera, you'd like to keep that on the other side. So, I mean, to, to me, when I look at this, the pictures and so forth, and I appreciate um, Ms. Lee's um, photos. When I look at that, I think that fence makes sense and I think that what's And I think that what's clearly, as everyone said, is sort of missing is a softening that would very, be very helpful, but we all recognize the cemetery side. Um, when I look at the scaffolding, and I'm sorry, I didn't see that, wasn't on the site visit, but I look at the scaffolding, it feels like a lot of situations in town where it's just, you know, just a little too much. And if it can be lowered some, I think it's a big, would be a big help for, you know, for a lot of reasons, again, just for the, the, the interface. And I think that's actually the place that we can, we can and do have uh, some responsibility, because I don't think we can stop the fence. Um, if we, you know, necessarily, but we can, you know, through um, negotiation with the landowner and perhaps we can make it a little better. Um, we can, you know, deny the special permit on the grounds that we think that the house is just too high for that particular location and for that particular issue. And I don't think we, I'm not hearing that people necessarily want to do that. But I think that's, you know, where I think our focus with the landowner can be in terms of thinking about um, you know, if there's any modulation in the house, it would be necessary to sort of just blend it a little better in with the environment around it. And then I think that, you know, otherwise, the near neighbors, the size of houses around it, all those other criteria that we usually use. You know, seem to be in favor of this particular uh, application.
Robbie, did you have anything to add?
Uh, you know, I, I just want to be clear that I am sensitive to history. I think I, you know, made that point also on the, on the Barrett Mill property. Um, you know, that's why I tried to go back and look at the history of this hill. Uh, it looks like in Kai's history of Concord, uh, he does reference that in 1834, there was a large four-story windmill on the summit of the New Burying Ground Hill, which was a site, if not a success. Um, so, you know, if you really are looking at history, that's the same year Emerson moved to Concord. He lived up on the Old Mans. He would have gone by that windmill every day when he was, when he moved here and known it was there. Uh, and, and, and been cognizant of that when he gave the speech to open the Sleepy Hollow Cemetery in 1855. So, you know, there's, the history is never a constant and it's always changing and evolving. He himself, you know, thought that there would be huge oak trees there that weren't there when the cemetery was opened. And so, you know, I'm sure they were glad the windmill came down, but I, I'm not sure that there was, you know, at the time of the founding of the cemetery, an expectation that, you know, somebody wouldn't try to make the windmill work up on top of that hill. Um, so, you know, I, I just want to sort of make that point that I, I am trying to be sensitive to history here. Uh, and, you know, again, we're, we're in this position. I think that the point was made by the public, you know, where are we finding benefit? In the project, uh, you know, that, that there is benefit to private property rights. Um, they benefit all of us and the fact that we have them and can exercise them uh, is a huge benefit. Uh, and I think pu- putting a, a thoughtfully designed, um, you know, nice house up is uh, is a benefit to the town that's, its development is, um, you know, as I think Tom mentioned, I don't think this is a McMansion that's going up on top of that hill. Uh, if, if, if he were to not have the pool house, I think it's a by right house that he's putting up there. But I think it is a benefit that we, you know, as, as evidenced by the, the recent bylaw change that the town likes the idea of the possibility of having additional dwelling units. So the pool house to me is more of a benefit than a detriment uh, to the overall plan. And if that's what gives us, if that's what puts us in the position where now we have sort of, uh, you know, purview over what's going on top of the hill, then uh, you know, it's, it's not as, as clear cut that we should be, we should be dictating what that house looks like. Um, but, but at the end of the day, I, I do agree. I think, you know, from the first meeting we had on this through the site visits, I think we've been shown a landscaping plan that demonstrates kind of sensitivity to try to soften the impact. Uh, and, you know, as we're hearing from the applicant, you know, there may be um, possibilities around the ridgeline and possibilities around um, you know, things that could be done with the cemetery, which is where we kind of started out. But, you know, it's not something we can mandate, but certainly something that seems like the applicant is open to and, and, and could there also give some benefit to the town. So I, you know, I, I certainly can get there. Um, uh, you know, I, I, you know, like you said, I'm not sure if we need to see like one final kind of package here that, you know, now that this input, which I don't think was really, I don't think we really heard this input in the first couple meetings on this project. Now we've heard it.
Right.
Uh, maybe we, we can digest that and put it into a final package.
That's kind of where, what I'm thinking. And Tom, if that's something you would be agreeable to, to continuing this, giving them one more iteration, giving, given what we've said. And Robbie, I hear all of your points. Everything is a balancing act and none of us are going to be purist to what, you know, unless you want to build a windmill there, but I don't.
Higher. taller.
It's all just balancing these competing interests and I feel much better at the end of this than I was at the beginning, thinking that we were shortchanging one person's interest on, uh, for the others. So, Tom, if that's something, that's what I would propose if anyone else has anything else proposed, but I'd say we look at this one more time. Tom?
Yes, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to uh, try and put something together over this next month that would be accepted by the town uh, for uh, you know, an additional donation above and beyond the money that we spent on the trees. I'll make a donation to the, to the public works or the town or whomever, you know, for uh, you know, the benefit of the cemetery to use how, how they would like. And hopefully it'll be to soften the fence.
Um, so Jim, I think you and I, and I think Theo, you too, and maybe Lesso, Robbie, were also interested in seeing uh, lowering of that ridgeline, see what you, you can come up with there, right there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. Yep, yeah.
I can do that. The, the pitch is a very steep pitch, so we could lower the pitch. We could also um, get rid of the gable end and uh, make the gable end into a hip roof, which would take a lot out of it also.
Yeah, just see, see what you come up with, with your architect, I think, and I will, we'll look at it. But, you know, anything lower would, uh, would be much appreciated, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I need, need to still, I mean, be, because I, I mean, as you, as everybody said, uh, we've here, I think it's an architecturally well-designed house, so I, I, you know, it's, I, I think any modifications, I don't think should be any architectural modification shouldn't be suggested or, or done by this board, but should be done by your architect and, and should be, you know, be brought back to us, you know, so I, I don't want to say like, yeah, just lower, make the pitch lower and we're done.
Um. Can I have a goal? Can I say three feet?
Pretty short house, Tom. Oh, you mean lowering it three?
Yeah, lowering it three feet.
No, a, a, again, I, I, I do think, you know, it's not, it's, I, to me, at least, speaking for myself, it's not an absolute. You know, it's, it's still, you know, if, if you lower it six feet and it is ugly, I'd rather have you down, lowering it three feet and looking good. That's, so that's, that's, that's my point, is that, you know, I, I think you want to have uh, an, your architect look at it and, and, and come down with a sensitive design that's, that, that satisfies.
I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, and I think what you're hearing is that we all think what has been done is pretty sensitive, so. Sounds like, um, we're all on the right track. Uh, there was a question about floor area. This is not a floor area ratio question because it doesn't meet those standards. Uh, Elizabeth, that disappeared for me, that comment that just popped up. Did you see that comment?
The, the comment was that the board has not addressed the floor ratio question, floor ratio question.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so this. So this project is a special permit to go um, over 50% for a non-conforming structure. The project is under the maximum floor area ratio requirement.
All right, um, thank you. So should we go ahead and continue this till our next hearing, which I have no idea when that is, March?
March, March 11th.
March 11th at 7:05, is that?
I, I, I leave that up to Heather. To tell me.
Uh, 7:25? 25?
Wow.
All right. You got a lot of stuff, huh? All right.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I, I make a motion to uh, continue the public meeting for comments and Newbury LLP for a special permit on the section 713, 715, 11.6 zoning by law uh, to our uh, next scheduled uh, public hearing on March 11th at 7:25?
Second.
All right, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
If I, uh,
Hi.
Ms. Chris Moore, I. Thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate it. And we will see you at our.
Thanks, everybody. Really getting to know you guys. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, bye bye.
I, you know, I have to, have to say, as we're breaking up here, that, that we've had a lot of situations with special permits where, I mean, a few at least, that we've been successful in getting um, the house lowered a bit. And it, I've, I've gone by some of those places, you know, some of them I have to do routinely. And it's, it's really, it's one thing that I think is um, can really be helpful, you know, in an area. Um, one of the things I mentioned when we were talking about the planning board bylaws and so forth, is the fact that the floor area ratio is uh, important, but it measures you know, measure square feet and it doesn't really measure volume. And if you have houses that were uh, 3,000 square feet, but they have eight-foot ceilings or seven and a half foot ceilings, and you have houses that are 3,000 square feet and they have 10-foot ceilings. Um, it's a different, it's a way different look from the, from the road and all that sort of stuff. And I, I do think that one of the things that that has, has impact in the, in the town is the extent to which many of these houses are just getting tall. Um, I know we have a limit, but more, I just perceive that more of them are getting to that limit. And so, um, I think here, you know, would be great, uh, if in an architecturally sensitive way, we can just take a little bit of height off of it.
Great, thank you. Um, we still have this uh, 710 Concord Country Club hearing. The applicant has asked to continue. Um, Elizabeth, is it okay for me to just say what I think, which is that it would be helpful for this applicant to come back to us um, before our next hearing with some reasoning? You know, uh, for why this special permit would be appropriate to grant under 11.6? It would just be helpful if we had something to review from the applicant in advance. And other than that, I don't, we need to discuss anything or should discuss anything? Great. Um, so we would continue this until March 11th at 7:30?
I moved.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Chris Moore, I. Great. Um, and then the only thing we have left are our minutes. Um, which I submitted comments to, Robbie submitted comments. I think those were incorporated. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of uh, December 17 with the edits that uh, Ravi and Elizabeth made.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Chris Moore, hi. Fantastic. Is there anything else? All right, well, um, nice seeing everyone and we'll see you in, uh, in March.